I think you've heard everything that we have going on. Finance Subcommittee, we have, did you go to a meeting that we, or are you going tomorrow?
I might go tomorrow. We've had some change in plans at home soon. Tomorrow's meeting is joint Fintan and Board of Selectmen. So I'm hoping to go because we're on the budget, we're on the docket, excuse me, for 8:30. I looked on the agenda. I get the agendas online. So I'm hoping to make that, but I'm not sure I would be able to.
Do you think, Ken, do you have any possibility that you could go if needed?
Potentially.
Do we need to go? I'm just wondering if we need to go.
I don't, I don't know if there's a specific need, but it just would be nice to have a presence since there's a joint meeting.
Okay.
And we are specifically on the docket with an 8:30 start for our particular budget.
I can always go too. I will try to get my Valentine work done.
My Valentine has a hockey game, so.
Yeah, my Valentine is.
It's dust.
Yeah. Okay, great.
My Valentine will be there, so I can always go.
Okay.
Hand them to the table.
Have Rose in your hands.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
A rose in her teeth.
Communications and Policies Subcommittee, we just had a meeting. Rachel or Ken, do you want to give a summary of what we just talked about?
Go first, Ken.
We briefly covered the need to update two areas of policy you're talking about. One was as a result of the OCR settlement discussions, and that's putting together, as I say, an implementation plan for education of homebound students. The other is, and that's going to come from, I think our, from Cat Lion, our attorney for education. Then the other item of policy is the athletics review going on. We'll probably, we're expecting a recommendation about fundraising policy, changes there. But other than that, I think that was all we covered for policy.
Yep. Yep, and then in Communications, I mean, we talked about, some of us went to the Triton Regional Advocacy Workshop at Triton High School last night. Talked about some effective means of listening to community members and reaching community members. So it's very, a lot of food for thought, and I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Is there anything else? Yeah, we should talk a little bit about that meeting last night. So there's some folks there that have started a Facebook group called Support Mass Regional Schools, and they're, they're the people from Raleigh. And they would like us to all like that page and share it so that we get some.
What's it called again, Andy?
Support MA Regional Schools. I have not found it.
It's out of Wachusett, isn't it?
No, it's, yeah, there's a woman from out of Wachusett and then a person from Raleigh, and.
Yeah. How about if one of us finds it, they just send it around?
They're trying to get some traction behind, I think Circuit Breaker is off the table for now. They're trying to get some regional, yeah, yeah. Regional transportation fully funded, which, you know, I don't know how realistic. I mean, Avi, you can.
No, in fact, it came up today, like we went to the Regional Schools, Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools meeting, and they, somebody there reminded, they had a group talking about 100%.
Yeah.
But somebody reminded the group what Department of Ed often says, which is that they're not big fans of 100% because they feel like districts need to have some skin in the game, owning some of the costs, because otherwise there's no incentive to manage the costs. So they would never be supportive, and I, I think that is reasonable. But the question is, that doesn't preclude you from advocating something like 80%.
Yeah.
Even a good 95.
You know, they didn't stop in their 60s.
I'd take 95.
Yeah, exactly, that's right, exactly. And I think it's an issue that really is impacting the Western districts and the regional community where there's much larger geographic areas, so they're all over that issue and have been for some time.
And then the other one was.
For people.
For people.
If part of the goal is to get a lot of people to be part of their Facebook page, I think we should reach out to the PTO and just ask all the PTO people to sign up and share that, because that's a great way for people to just understand more about what's going on.
And they're trying to do one, one task a week or one challenge a week to get people to support some of their efforts, but Raleigh is in really some rough shape, and I think they're worried about being able to find a school. So that was, that was a good part of that meeting. And they gave us some good suggestions on communication and handling miscommunication and things that are happening on social media, which was, was helpful.
Yeah, totally helpful.
So, yeah. Negotiations Subcommittee, do you guys have anything?
Now, we, our meeting was canceled due to the snow day. Did we hear anything?
Trying to connect with Dan this week, just to see if we can get the date on the book. His suggestion is that we just use the schedule that we had put together at the beginning of the year and try to pick up from there. The only thing we have to work out is, of course, looking at four to six to eight hour sessions, we would have to be looking at teacher release time, and I'm not sure how that syncs up with principals and directors. We have people present at May before we train them. So it falls in my court right now to communicate with principals to see which of those days might be viable. Question for this group, just on the, the four versus six versus eight hours to get started. Do you have a problem, or do you have any concerns?
I think four, I think shorter to get for the very first one, just to make sure it's going to sort of move along. Because if it's eight hours and everybody's not, doesn't have their ducks in a row, we could be sitting there for eight hours and not making a lot of progress.
I feel like we need to know what we're going to research and be prepared with before we can, okay. So I'll, are we all on the same page?
Who determines the agenda? Because it seems to me that if you had, you know, certain criteria that were not being met, you would not schedule an eight hour meeting, right? Who controls the agenda?
We have a facilitator.
Yeah.
Who I think will help us in a, I would recommend a shorter first meeting where we can establish agenda, ground rules, protocols, and then we get our assignments to go forward for the next. So if she books the first meeting as the identifying common interests and establishing options, then we know that probably is more of a four hour or three hour session, because based on those things, we'll have to go out and do more research. I think we're going to lean heavy on her.
So Dan's saying keep with the original calendar?
Keep with the original dates.
So when is that?
We have dates. Two Wednesdays a month, beginning at the end of February, probably March more realistically, and running through.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. The other thing that we didn't really talk about last night, but they were talking about in order to kind of communicate out some of your budget issues, is that it's also helpful sometimes to get your union reps on board in terms of where you are with budgets, that they can help, they can help communicate kind of the impact of cuts if you need to make them. So I thought that that was, you know, a nice strategy, and just wondered how you guys wanted to possibly float that, if and when. So I know Julie kind of was thinking about it. If you guys could talk a little bit about that amongst yourselves, that would be great. Okay? Great. Superintendent's report.
I just want to give a good shout out to the middle school. It was our stars last week. They, they were featured both in the Gloucester Times and on New England Cable News for the, pardon, the Middle, Sixth Grade Academy and the work that they're doing there, integrating a whole bunch of our initiatives, social emotional learning, technology, and introduction to middle school. They're really doing a nice job. They were featured for writing a grant and getting money to get some iPads to help them with the project. So I know they were thrilled, and the grant was.
Spalding.
By Spalding.
Who is a wonderful partner to us.
Thank you, Spalding. Over eight hundred, over $850,000 donated in the past 10 years alone, more than a million in their lifetime. They, you know, two times a year really do a wonderful job of supporting a lot of projects that are designed to enhance student learning. So they have done a wonderful job, and they also got a lot of credit. I was focusing on our lovely kids who did a really good job and were really good, the stars of the piece. Also, Dula Plant, who was the teacher, really created the connection between the two. So that was a nice piece last week also.
Can you just clarify?
Yeah.
Tell me what the Sixth Grade Academy is. Is it a certain group of kids, or is it across all kids?
Every student in the sixth grade goes through what's been dubbed the Sixth Grade Academy. It's really an introduction to middle school and helps them to establish good practices, study habits, good online skills. Because we use Google Classroom as one of our main platforms at the middle school, it's an introduction to that for them and how to use it and learn with it. They also do literacy, preparation literacy work, and they do quite a bit of running.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, a shout out to our Scholastic Art and Writing Award winners. We had over 50 students represent on that list. I'm not going to read them all to you, but it's posted on all of our social media, and I believe there was a submission to the cricket as well. And then our sports teams are knocking it out of the park. Going through my list. I know Robotics and Debate are both gearing up for some big events. And the other big piece that we talked about is, over the past couple of weeks, is Memorial School is partnering with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee to do some safety work, which I know has been an ongoing partnership.
Good.
Drama Fest open rehearsal on Friday night.
Yes. At 6 o'clock on the sixth.
What does that mean?
It's, it's everybody's opportunity, it's the only opportunity for us in the community to see the Drama Fest one act play.
Oh, okay.
On Friday night, it's only 40 minutes long.
It sounds very interesting.
It starts at 6:00, and, yes, and then they'll, they'll compete at St. John's Prep on the first weekend in May, March.
Is there any twisting their arm to do another open performance after the break?
I don't know.
It's a tough night for a lot of people. I have a question about the Sixth Grade Academy. I'll do my best, I don't have. So if it's a, if this is a way to get the kids acclimated to Google Classroom and get them using it, and it sounds like the middle school is, it's pretty widely used.
Yep.
I'm hearing that. It's not so widely used in the high school. Some teachers use it, some don't. It's, it's kind of, you know, catch as catch can on Google Classroom. So I'm wondering kind of what the philosophy is, as usual. My son said he doesn't use it in some classes, he used a lot more in the middle school.
But some teachers are more saggier than others.
Well, that's where I'm going with that.
Which is where we have.
We're building capacities.
Okay.
This is probably two years new for us, so, and Del hasn't been, well, she's been here for a few years now, but this has been her work. So it sounds like the middle school embraced it a lot sooner than the high school.
And she's a Google certified instructor, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Our debate team's international, that happened over the weekend, we haven't been in over 10 years, so they're by the DC in March, excuse me, April. Just a plug for the debate team.
Anything else?
I was just going to mention that we have started, or continue our work with Facing History ourselves at the high school. They are a non-established tolerance organization that uses history as lessons to life in a way to develop understanding through stories in students. And I know Trish has been working for over a year trying to get the ADL in, and as soon as we could get them in with the fall. So this is a prelude to the work we're going to do with the ADL next year, including the World of Difference program that we're going to be participating in. So a lot happening on that front. But Facing History is doing a lot right now. I mean, traditionally, it was, the Holocaust was their main drive to teach, to teach about activism and how not to be a bystander, actually, not to repeat the mistakes of history, but with everything going on socially right now, whatever your political leaders, there's a lot of negative discourse, and they're doing a lot of work around civic education and building capacity around civic discourse. So they just visited our superintendent's group last week, and they were actually here on the same day, including our teachers and students. So it's exciting, they've got a lot of work going on. Is that a K through A curriculum or just a high school curriculum? It tends to, anywhere, I would put it from eighth to 12th grade. It can be heavy.
Yeah. Can you just give us an outlook on what we're talking about in March? So we have February break next week, so we don't have any meetings.
So our March meetings are the 6th and the 20th, and both of those meetings are going to be heavy budget meetings.
Phase two?
I was just going to say, it's phase two. So if we go back to our January 30th meeting, when we outlined the budget in two phases. Phase one was a balanced budget to the towns, and phase two is how do we solve our resource distribution issue? So with the resources we have, a lot of the staffing that we have on the books, how do we ensure that the high school has what it needs to meet the enrollment bubble? What choices do we have to make to move resources from one level to another level or one department to another to cover that? So we will talk about our plan for that on March the 6th, and hopefully we can make some decisions by March the 20th on how to execute.
Okay.
So that's where we will revisit the question of, does, how does elementary foreign language factor into this? Is this a time where we need to look to perhaps suspend that program for a short time, maybe reexamine it, see if we can bring it back in a more immersive style? Right now, it's exploratory. Is it something we try to hold on to for another year? Or is it a question of simply having to choose a priority and making a difficult decision when we'd rather not have to? So what we're doing is, we're crunching the numbers, weighing out the options, and we'll talk you through what we see as a possible pathway forward when we get back.
If we could have some real information about what those programs, what is middle, what does elementary school foreign language entail? How much time is it?
Yep.
You know, what's, what are we seeing as the real impact on that in terms of learning? That would be great.
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, anything else? Okay. All right, Building Committee people.
Where do you want all this?
Get comfortable, because we are really going to dig into this stuff tonight. So is it okay if we just do some of the housekeeping stuff?
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, so we're going to call the Building Committee meeting to order? Let's go through invoices in a few minutes. So Avi, are you ready to talk about invoices?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, so. Can I have a motion to approve Dornwood here's invoice number 11, $14,000,939? Avi, you want to, so Weld and then O'Donnell. So this is $14,000, Avi, $3939, have you had a chance to look at this?
Yes, I have, and everything looks good. And as a reminder, there's a separate item in there for cost estimating, and that was part of our separate, I think it's Exhibit A to our OpGAM contract, cost estimating was broken as a separate item, and this cost estimate, this price for cost estimating is right in line with what we would expect, given the rates that we talked about and the number of schemes that we processed, and so I think it looks good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Great. Can we look at JCJ invoice number six, and you have $24,285? Weld?
Yep.
And O'Donnell or Foster? Okay. Avi, this is for $24,285, have you any chance to look at this?
Yeah, that's standard invoice, I have no concerns.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Great. And then a Minuteman Press invoice for scanning something.
Carolyn?
Yep.
What was this for?
Postcards.
Oh, great, hooray, postcards.
Community meeting on the first, or 31st, 31st.
So motion to approve is Weld and Foster. Seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Great. Okay, you ready?
I'm coming.
Okay. But that's okay. And then, do we have minutes, do we have to approve as well?
Yes.
So can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
That's the cost estimating.
Weld and Foster, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye, opposed? Great. Abstained? Who wasn't on here last time? George, Charlie? Okay. We're going to do a quick review of the N3 and where we are with the PSR, and take it away to you.
Okay, we'll bring the, we'll get the imagery up in a minute. We did come prepared with slides, all the options, if there's specific questions, of the five options that were left on the table, faced at the beginning of last meeting. In addition to that, we have the Options Analysis Matrix that helps inform the decision-making process, and we have the budget spreadsheet that we went through and greatly worked on, foreseeing, you know, we need to do that in the same amount of detail, we're prepared to talk about it if there's any questions. So tonight is really about formal approval of the submittal to the MSBA for the preferred schematic report. As you mentioned, the School Building Committee reviewed the material and the final selection being included in that, and I was to whittle the building options down to one singular option. Formerly, maybe even still called the hub, but it was N3, which is a new option. Also on the table facing us on the meeting on the first was one renovation option, one addition renovation option, AR2, and three new options. And just for the members of the school committee, MSBA protocol requires the district to look at options of all three different types, a renovation only, addition renovation, and a new option. And so that's just what we did over the course of the past couple few months. We did send those details, very, very high level details to estimators to do a cost comparison exercise, and we have those results that we went through on the night of the first as well. And so we're really here as a, as a joint school and building committees to review and formally approve the submission to the MSBA with that decision contained.
So do we want, does anyone want to look specifically at any of the slides? Is there anything, is there anything that you want to review, school committee, since you may not have been here? Are there any questions about that that you want to look at? Any of these slides, you want to, this is the comparison of the, the final five that we had, and I think, were there some edits to this?
We've got the edits from the last meeting.
Perfect. So we were fair, and we went back through this, so I think that this reflects the, what we were talking about in that meeting. So if anyone has any questions about this, you can ask them now. Otherwise, let's go to the next slide. Those were the five options that we had. Any questions on this? Oh, God, no.
I'll just keep going.
Yeah. If anyone wants to stop, we can do that, but I think we.
I guess I'm.
Can I ask a question on the N3? There was some talk of possibly being able to have fewer modulators, is that still?
It's one thing that we're going to look at as we go into schematic design. The task though is facing the committee and the design team is to try to limit them as much as possible. And so I think, you know, JCJ's done a pretty good job of proposing different configurations and trying to limit those. And we feel there may be some opportunities to further reduce those, it's just until we get into the weeds and some of the details and everything that goes into schematic design, I'm not really comfortable making that determination right now, but we think there's an opportunity.
And right there in the middle is where the yellow with the gray around it, so those are the modulators?
Yeah. Yeah.
The scheme right now, the assumption is that the scheme will need six modulators,
but as Steve mentioned, there are, between the conversations we've been having with the district, there may be some pathways to reduce that number possibly to zero, but at least reduce it in further.
Okay, any other questions about any of these plans? Yes? Okay, so this is where we landed last time?
Spot, the future center.
To the right. We're through those little four little pages.
There's actually, these could potentially go by the north corner or off to the side, there's a different variety of configuration, we'll explore those in further detail in the schematic phase.
Okay, and this was the very expensive hook? Great. Anything else you wanted to go over?
No, if there's no further questions about any of the details or any of the schemes specifically, that was all.
So I had a question about the, the intro to the PSR. I hope that people had a chance to review at least the intro, because there were a lot of questions that were answered in that. And the last page, it was page 12, it was talking about the space for the after-school programming, and it says, "The district acknowledges that MSBA's policy, A4 footage of the community room shall be borne by the regional school district and participating communities." And Essex is not going to pay for that, so I'm wondering if we need to edit that page to say the town of Manchester? Is that, or is that not?
In terms of the MSBA, I mean, they, while that would be extra information, I don't know that they necessarily would appreciate that level of detail. There's no, there's nothing keeping us from providing that.
Yeah.
But in terms of, the way the MSBA will look at that is that, since it's, since it's a town-specific program, and it's a school-specific program, their policy is to not participate in it one way or the other.
Yeah.
And so that, that's a clear delineation. How it gets funded is, they know it's in the district, and how the district works out assessing each town differently is their own matter to a specific degree.
I think the concern is probably, MSBA, they don't, they don't really find, but I think the fact that it's a public document.
Yeah, right.
And people are going to be looking at it, so yes, that edit can be made.
Yeah, I think it'd be smart.
Yep.
To have it, I just don't want that to be a sticking point.
Absolutely.
Pardon?
I wasn't clear what you were talking about.
Okay. So that's page 12.
That's a portion of about the PDP response letter.
Yeah.
And Avi and I actually had a specific discussion about that, and so if there's language, specific language that we can incorporate.
Okay.
We'll just ask for the district to write.
Great.
Just so we get it right.
Yeah. Anyone have any other comments or any of the other aspects of the?
I was just wondering why the preferred solution was basically blank at the moment. Is that?
At the time of posting, we hadn't developed enough to.
Put anything in it?
Put, to share with you yet. So there'll be further updates likely tomorrow.
Okay.
Anything else? It just seems like, right, this is saying, you have a lot of work to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So any questions from the school committee on this? I think the building committee's pretty comfortable with this at this point. That's it, sir.
Can I say one thing about the school committee, just more for the camera and people at home, that the school committee has been kept up to date at all of our school committee meetings, and this definitely is not the first time to say this.
Right.
They've all been attending the community meetings, so they're probably just as up to speed as the school building committee.
Yeah.
Just want to say that.
Yep, they were at the community meetings and at the after, so I think they're all fairly well.
Exactly, and the information for a lot of it, we've got some very clearly visualized.
It was available for this, for this meeting. So can I have a motion, does this have to come, do we have to do two separate votes, one school committee, one building committee?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so can I have a building committee member make a motion to approve the preferred option? Wait, no, the preferred, what is it?
PSR report.
The PSR, yep.
George and Sarah.
George and Sarah?
No, Alba.
Oh, Alba, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
Formality for the vote, as long as we get a count.
Yeah, we need a count.
Specific count, not just unanimous.
Okay, so do you want a roll call?
That would help.
Okay, great. So we're going to do a roll call.
Well, yes.
Can we start?
This is just the committee roll call?
So, yeah, Weld, yes.
Let's do a show of hands.
Building man?
Yes.
Foster, yes.
Yes, we can do a show of hands too, yes.
Don't lie.
Put your hands up. Is there anybody on the building committee who's voting against it? Great, so everybody who's present is a yes. Great, so everybody who's present is a yes. Okay, and opposed? Abstained? Great. School, school committee. So, the same motion is made by Erdman, seconded by Bissavon? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Need a roll call? No. Everybody's here except Julie, so that's six. Okay? Great. So, we've got some time to kill.
Where's the pizza?
What else we need to do?
I'm really excited about it, and I think the hub is an excellent thing, and it's just so fun to watch the whole process, so thank you, everybody.
I was, I was skeptical that it would, we would get here, but you guys did it, so thank you for delivering. Okay? Great. I think that's all we got. Anything else, Pam and Avi? Can I have a motion to adjourn?[1719.12]